Good evening, everyone. With the time being 6:00 PM on Tuesday, March 26, 2024, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order and ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. The first item on the agenda is the review and approval of the minutes from the meeting on March 12, 2024. Is there any discussion around those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve them.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Remember Adam O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Remember Deborah Adams?
Yes.
Remember Blake?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. And the next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Good evening, Mrs. Parenti.
Good evening. Thank you. Welcome. Tonight, I'm going to start off with a personnel update. I'd like to announce the resignation of Laura Layly. She is an ABA at Park Ave. And the second announcement I have, I'm sad to say, Ms. Sarah Phillips, our nurse at Park Ave, she's been a staple at Park Ave for many years. She's at a point in her life now where she's ready to move on to the next chapter as her kids are older and going off to school and she's looking for a change. So she has resigned and will be leaving us soon also. And then we also had a resignation from Ms. Dorothy Winder. She is a Behavior Interventionist at Webster Middle School. So we wish them all the best. Moving on, I am very excited to have a special guest here. On March 21st, I was so proud to attend the annual Scholars Recognition Luncheon that is hosted by MAS. It was at the Hogan Center at Holy Cross. I was able to have lunch with Ms. Angel Marin Casares and Mr. Ryan Collins to celebrate Angel and her accomplishments. I asked Angel to be here tonight. I did read her bio at the last meeting, but I would love it if she would talk a little bit about her accomplishments and what she's doing. And it was just such a great pleasure to be able to see her shine and spend that time with her.
Well, good evening, everyone. And just some little updates about my personal accomplishments are that I am the second in my graduating class and I continue to diligently work throughout my four years here at Bartlett. Well, three years, but as you know. And I continue to emphasize how important it is to keep working hard and to just continue to shine in that aspect. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you. It was nice and it's so wonderful to hear all the accomplishments of all the students there. Angel said, wow, some of these kids. And I said, hey, don't sell yourself short. I mean, she's done a lot of amazing things and she shined with the rest of them. And it was just a real, a real pleasure. And I was happy to honor you there.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Not just a great student, but also a wonderful human being. I'm very pleased to see you here tonight, Angel, and really proud of you and all your accomplishments. For three years at Bartlett, you transferred in, right, in your sophomore year, which can't be easy.
Yeah. I mean, the adjustment period was a little, was a little bit of a learning curve, but I managed to get used to it eventually, so.
Clearly. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Angel. Thank you. Moving on, I'll have an instructional leadership update. The district, lucky us, the good news just keeps coming. And we are so fun to, we are so excited to always be chosen. We have been chosen to participate in the CSDP, which is the Center for School and District Partnership. As a participant in this process, leaders in our district will be asked to complete a questionnaire and a survey and participate in a virtual interview and submit a small set of documents. In addition, school principals in our district will be asked to complete a short survey focused on district-wide continuous improvement processes and data use. So that should be coming up within the next month. We will complete that along with all our other tasks that we have to do. And this is all part of our progress monitoring. As you know, we are being monitored by the state and a lot of these things just kind of align with one another and the work that we're doing here in the district. Next, we continue to pilot curriculums across the district. At the high school, we have a science pilot going on. And at our elementary school, we have math curriculum pilot going on. I'm happy to say that our new curriculum director has jumped right in with the high school and is very involved with our science curriculum pilot. And I was really excited last week at Park Ave to be invited over to see Ms. O, because I always mess up her last name, so I'm just going to call her Ms. O. She was actually teaching a class, piloting a new, it was Eureka Math, I believe, that day that I saw, for some teachers and the students. And it was pretty amazing to watch her work and do her thing. And the kids were just engaged and focused in the lessons that were going on. And it was fun to listen to the teachers talk about what was happening there. So we're excited to see that move forward and that'll be continuing. I'll let Mr. Collins talk about the high school as he gets going through. But it's nice to see the engagement, especially at the elementary school with staff and the involvement in such a collaborative process. So we're happy to keep that moving. Once choices are made, that'll come back here to the school committee for approval. And we look forward to that day. Any questions about that? Nope, moving on. Last week, I attended our Southern Wester County Education Collaborative Meeting on Friday. In one of our future meetings, Mr. Arnold Lundwall, who's the director there, may be attending. He's asked to attend all of his districts. What he's looking to do is start a capital surplus fund. They need approval, so the collaborative will need approval to, from the majority of districts that belong to the collaborative. And what their hope is that they'll be able to put some excess funds. They've been doing well with revenue and they're only allowed to keep up to a certain percentage of funds. Anything excess either comes back to the district or can get put into a capital. The funds that come back to the district wouldn't be enough to really offset anything here, so they're looking to put it in for capital improvement. And he'll explain more about that because as they need to make improvements to the facilities that they rent or they're in, they don't have any funds to turn to when something like that happens. So he's going to be moving throughout different districts. He's got a bunch of dates, actually the dates that are thrown out to him already. He's already booked with other schools. So hopefully, we can get something done for him sooner than later. But I'll bring that to you. As you know, you can see the campus. The building project is in full swing here and it's very active. I know Ms. Kontos has a lengthy report on that, so I'm not going to do double duty there, but it is keeping us hopping and there is never a boring day around here, that's for sure. As we head into April, we're also looking at holding another chronically absent recovery program. So we are in the process of pulling students that are chronically absent. We'll be reaching out to their families and see if we can get some students in to maybe earn some time back over April break and also potentially catch up on some work while they're earning that time back. Any questions about that? Okay. Ms. Kontos and I are, have been working with AA Transportation and Ron Ernannwein in regards to our special education transportation. Our contract is up and it's expiring at the end of this school year. By law, we're not required to go out to bid for special education transportation. And so we're hopeful that we can negotiate an agreement with him with some reasonable to small increases as we've seen transportation just blowing up across the state. Numbers are coming back extremely high around the state for transportation. So I'm hoping the partnership that we have with AA and the fact that we do have our regular education transportation with them, that we can come to an agreement in future weeks that we will bring back to the committee. And then I'm also very excited to say that we are hosting our first grandparents-raising-grandchildren meeting here in Webster. And the meeting's going to be held on April 4, 2024, at 9:30 here in the Michael McCarrick Conference Room. I believe I put a flyer in your packet for you. I look forward to that meeting and hopefully engaging some of our grandparents in their child's education here at the school. And then lastly, under my report, Circuit Breaker. As you know, we have been closely monitoring our out-of-district tuition. We did this year submit an early claim. Typically, our Circuit Breaker claims are submitted at the end of the school year for the summer. But if you expect your claims to be higher, you can submit them early. And we did that and we should be eligible for some reserve claims from, emergency reserve claims from Circuit Breaker. When I spoke to the state, we won't know the actual amounts until early May, end of April. But we do expect to receive some additional funding, which would be helpful for us because right now, when we were reviewing the projections, we were about a million over in special education tuition. So that will help offset those funds. So we will definitely keep you up to date on the status on where we land with that because you know it's always beneficial for us to carry over a year of Circuit Breaker. And unfortunately, with the deficit that we're seeing right now, it would not give us that luxury to carry Circuit Breaker over, which will impact our budget next year. So we will definitely keep you up to date. We are monitoring it very closely. So I hate to end on a downer kind of note, but that concludes my report unless there's any questions about that.
Thank you, Mrs. Parenti. Any questions or comments from the committee? Okay. The next item on the agenda is a report from our business manager. Good evening, Mrs. Kontos.
Good evening, everyone. This evening, I'm going to give you two updates, one regarding the school building project and actually the other update is going to come from Kelsey Sanders. I did give a brief update about food services in the last meeting, but Kelsey's here tonight and she's going to give us a deeper dive. But let's get started with the school building project. Few things before I jump in. This is very fluid. What I might put in your notes as an update can change within a couple days, so things are constantly shifting. So I'll give you some of the highlights over the last couple weeks since the last time that we met. So you'll notice when you came in, site prep activities are continuing to take place outside of the central office, cafeteria and art rooms. We did take down a tree out there. That tree was necessary because of where drains are going in as well as where the new parking lot will be. So that work continues. Speaking of drains, videotaping of all of the drains and water lines has continued. We believe that they just wrapped up all of the videotaping last week. All of that footage, as well as the reports, will go to the town engineer once that's completed. Around the entire construction zone is construction fencing. Some of the other activities that we've taken from a safety standpoint has been to drive those posts into the ground where there's a heavy traffic area so that we can prevent any kind of hazards from those bases becoming unstable in, in the wind. And also mangates have been added around many of those fencing areas. There's a lot of work going on with utilities and coordination. We actually put a pole in so that we could take down the generator that's by the trailers, but National Grid decided they didn't like where that pole was, so now we're in the process of moving that and hopefully we'll, we'll have that resolved very soon. We have installed additional water and electric meters. From an electric standpoint, that's going to be a deduction meter. So what will happen is we'll be able to get what the consumption is by the construction team so that we can then charge them back for their share of the electricity that they're using in Section C. From a water standpoint, that is a separate meter and they will be charged directly for their usage. The chairlift that is between Section A and B, which is going to be our main lift with the other elevator coming offline in Section C, has been delayed. We were expecting that to be completed a couple weeks ago, but the GC has been having some challenges with the elevator company that has been hired to do this installation. We're hopeful that they will be here this week to complete, but in the meantime, the GC has been working feverishly with the state as well as with a potential other company that may have to come in to complete the work. So we're extremely disappointed about that. We were hopeful that that was going to be done shortly after February School Vacation Week and that continues to go on beyond its deadline date. Abatement activities. So the Department of Local Services, known as DLS, has approved the abatement plan. And part of that approval required that polytunnels be put in as an added layer of protection. And then the next step was there is an environmental engineer, Fosse and O'Neill, that actually does our hygienist plan and they take a look at it to give the okay. And so in the report, it says we haven't had approval to proceed, but they have received permission to proceed in some few areas so far. So they're able to start in the basement downstairs and in the band room. But as activities continue, they'll, they'll get approvals. But there is some dependency on the chairlift being completed before they'll get full permission to go full force with the abatement. We have a groundbreaking ceremony coming up on April 8. All of those invitations have been mailed and we are in the process of working on the program. Also for permitting, because in Section C, we are going to see our cafeteria relocated. And so we have for permitting processes, we actually have a meeting tomorrow with Kelsey, the Department of Health and some of the experts on the project so that we can plan for that permitting process. We've also had some initial planning relative to furniture, fixtures and equipment. So what we did was we discussed what would that procurement strategy look like relative to the furniture? We did come up with a tentative plan and that plan is that we would be purchasing all of the furniture for the entire school at one time, looking to install that furniture at least after Phase Two is completed. And it would be the summer after Phase Two is completed that we would get that installed. You know, that's the plan as we speak today, but that is also subject to change, so don't hold me to that. Other conversations that have been going on, I'm not sure if everyone's aware, but in the auditorium, the new design calls for two floors of seating in the new auditorium. So one of the conversations that we've been having with the design team as well as with the building inspector and Kathy Barris as well, is really the type of stair lift that we have in that auditorium. The original design called for a stair lift and a set of stairs. We're going back to the drawing board on that and revisiting that design, so more to come on that. The last thing is that we have received reports of some fumes in the building. It is the smell of diesel that is coming from the Bobcats that are being used in the auditorium. It's permeating from Section C into Section B. Primarily, we're getting reports from the teachers in the art room as well as the floors right above that at the, you know, end of that wing. We have been taking that very seriously because the safety of all of our staff and students is paramount. So some of the actions that we've been taking so far is we have sealed off all the doors and the walls. So at the end of Section B, we have taped that up and added some weather stripping in there. We've installed CO detectors in all of the classrooms. Air scrubbers have been installed at the end of Section B before Section C upstairs and downstairs. We're also opening up the windows in each of those rooms every night, letting fresh air in. And we're going to continue to monitor that as we move forward. Over the last week and a half, the auditorium has not called for any Bobcat usage. So don't, we don't really have a good measure of how that's working. So once that resumes again, we'll continue to monitor closely. And I am continuing to keep those group of teachers updated on the status and the actions that we're taking. Let me stop there, see if there's any questions. No updates relative to maintenance other than those, which I think is our biggest one. And then I can turn that over to Kelsey now.
Thanks, Ms. Kontos. Good evening, everyone. I figured I would start the report tonight with, since it's supposed to be spring now. We began planning for this year's farm-to-school growing season. Again, we are doing seedlings and seeds growing in the classroom with window flats and some classrooms do milk cartons. And it proved to be so beneficial last year. And we're hoping that this year, we can take it a step further and have students participate in the actual planting process so that they can see it all the way through. The Farm-to-School Committee, who's always looking for new members, the community is welcome as well as students, has been planning for the upcoming spring. And I just want to give a thank you to our garden coordinator, Peter Germano. He's always working so hard in the planning and running the Home Depot and ordering everything. So he definitely deserves a shout out. He's working currently on the purchasing, planning for garden cleanups and getting them ready for planting and procuring the wood for additional raised beds. I just got the news today that our soil is being delivered on Monday and that, to me, always signifies the start of when we can actually get planting. And Farm-to-School has also started circulating a monthly newsletter. It's sent through the district-wide email at the moment, so you can look out for that. And I'm also really happy to report that our goal this year of increasing local procurement and working with local farms as well as continuing our taste test has grown exponentially. A lot of this is due to the funds we've reported to you from the New England Foods Grant and the Supply Chain Assistance Grant. And it's just so great to have the opportunity to have working relationships with local farms and get the freshest of fresh things into our schools and really kind of embody that farm-to-school, farm-to-plate full circle that we've been working towards. My favorite thing that I have to report is we did kale chips at Park Ave and that was a huge hit. And we also for January did apple cider from Carlson Farms. They're located in Harvard. And that apple cider was so popular that it's now a regular item that we include with breakfast and sometimes lunch is a treat. So it's just, the taste tests are so meaningful and there'll be more to come. We did receive additional funding for farm-to-school efforts. It's called the Mass Fresh Grant through the state. We received $11,000 in total. It is for this school year and fiscal year '25. The governor's office just signed off on it, so we can officially start spending for that. The main focus of that grant funding is to expand our school garden efforts, to increase access to curriculum and education materials, to really get that farm-to-school into the classroom and get that whole school approach, and to start up hydroponic efforts in the school. We do currently have a small-scale hydroponics going at the middle school. Mrs. Cormier oversees that and that will be in the newsletter, so cliffhanger, you'll have to stay tuned. All right. And the partnerships, I just wanted to also highlight that we are working very close with Woodyer Farms in Sutton. We did local beef from them. We did burgers here at Bartlett and we did stew beef for beef teriyaki at the middle school. And it is, it has been very good feedback to have local beef that's raised and, you know, processed right down the street. So we plan to continue that relationship with them. And in next year's grant funding, it also includes funds towards farm field trips. And Woodyer is already looking for details to get us on their farm. In the upcoming weeks, we will be administering student feedback surveys that the food service team has been working on individually. They will be delivered directly to students at Bartlett and the middle school. And at Park Ave, we will reach out for teacher feedback. And this just helps strengthen our meal programs. Participation increases directly stems to student feedback and satisfaction. And though we want to provide the most nutritious meals as possible, it's definitely valuable to know what our student body wants. The school wellness committee has also been very busy this year. We're taking part of the Mass Wellness Initiative, which is through DESI and the John Stocker Institute. We have our own wellness coach who is working with us to revamp and revise our district wellness policy. The main goals is to, of course, make sure we're in compliance with current recommendations and requirements, but also to meet our district's personal needs. We're currently at the phase where our first draft is complete. We have done this through school wellness committee meetings and working closely with nutrition and health professionals within the schools. We have the nurses, myself, and we have physical ed. And the draft is going to DESI, I believe, by the end of this week where a, you know, professional will look it over, send us back a draft. And then once we have our revisions and we feel it's strong, that will be available to be presented to the school committee. And I just always like to start to end with a shout out to the food service staff, especially this year with doing more scratch cooking, more local, lots of trial and error of new things. They're always just so willing to try something new. And, you know, their teamwork, their dedication is so evident to the students and the district as a whole. And it, it is just so great to see them coming up with their own ideas on new recipes or we should try this fruit that we've never tried before. So I just want to give them the shout out. They, they so very much deserve. And I will end with saying that Mrs. Kontos and I are working on details for the Food Service Department's financial reports and current budget information, so that will be available to present to the school committee soon as well. So I will be back with more information on that. Were there any questions?
Any questions from the committee?
Thank you.
Wonderful update, really. Well done and very informative, lots of good things happening. I know the cider, the kale chips, all big hits at Park Avenue. Great to hear about the local beef. Lots of good things happening. Exposing our kids to foods that they may not otherwise be exposed to opens up lots of possibilities for healthy eating and all-around wellness. So great. Thank you very much. And also, I want to reiterate your shout out to the food service team too. So thanks. If there's nothing else about that, I'll hand it, Ms. Kontos, does that conclude your report too?
Yes.
Okay. So thank you for those updates, both of you.
Okay.
Yeah, really well done. And with that being said, I will move to the next item on the agenda, which is our principal report. Good evening, Mr. Collins.
Good evening. I'll start with, I didn't bring kale chips and wish I would have. I want some. I'm excited. So I'll say that first and Mohammed can put that on his next time that we have them and we'll report back the greatness of the kale chip. I love that. As we always start out with something academic, I wanted to expand a little bit on what Superintendent Parenti started speaking about with our biology adoption and current pilot in place, along with the mass implement, which is a direct alignment to the mass core, the support through DESI and the science curriculum folks there. We have been piloting two high-quality instructional platforms. And there are currently two that are supported through DESI and those are BSCS, which stands for Biological Sciences Curriculum Study, and the Open SciEd. Open Sci and then Ed. And Open SciEd is one that is directly working alongside of DESI right now. Massachusetts is the only state that they're coupling with to directly accompany the standards of the current MCAS in place. So we are about to venture into that one second. We are currently in the first one, which is the Biological Sciences Curriculum Study, BSCS. And then we'll move our kiddos through the second one, Open SciEd. And then along with our new curriculum director now, she will sit with us in the mass implement team at Bartlett. And we will sit with those teachers and assess the programs and come up with one that we will work on through a year next year as a pilot, just in one of those programs. Recently, I had the great opportunity to spend a day working with the second curriculum and then the DESI folks there in Open SciEd. So I'm really excited to watch our kids go through the process that I watched adults pretend to be kids and go through a few weeks back with Ms. Rivera and one of our instructional coaches at the high school. And we were really excited. So we have been floating through those biology classrooms, watching teachers explore this new student-centered curriculum. Both, both of these high-quality platforms are both student-centered, so it's a big shift around the way that you look at teaching science. And we're really excited about what it's going to bring to our young people. Next, we have our 2024-25 registration going on. We just kicked off today with meeting with a couple of the grade levels and letting them explore the program of studies that we just had reviewed and approved by you all last week. And we will begin our one-on-one sessions, allowing kids to explore new courses. And then, of course, our traditional courses that have been there as well as the different levels. So this one-on-one time with a counselor, I think you've heard me talk about it, I'm a big proponent of it. And it's a great opportunity for kids to be able to sit with a counselor and really look at what is best for them. And how I end the report tonight is about those pathways and those opportunities that are really great for kids. And so they are going to explore many options in terms of elective options and then, of course, the different levels of what they might take throughout the mass core. And then of course, the different levels of what they might take throughout the mass core, whether that be college level honors or advanced placement. And then we will move into MYCAP. I brought a lot of paperwork from um, our folks today, so that I'm just trying to encapsulate the tiniest bits, but they had so much that they wanted me to give you and present. So I want to tell you first about MYCAP. MYCAP is My Career and Academic Plan. This is something that is DESI-supported and prepares students for college and career civic readiness. The MYCAP process engages students in authentic post-secondary planning through a continuum of learning focused on the individual student interest, skills, and talents. The process allows for the student to be drivers of their own education and empowers them to connect their course, taking with career interest to seek out career development opportunities such as internships, apprenticeships, capstone projects, and lastly, to identify the personal, social, and behavioral skills needed to be successful in the workplace. As you've um, heard in some of my reports over the last year, we have started great work with partners um, in the Webster area for internships, both here at home, so to speak, with our technology department or our food services department, all the way out through some of our business partners like Map Fray or Gen Tex. There's a lot of research behind MYCAP and why we are sticking so closely with it at Bartlett. And I want to share this little bit of information that we've shared with these kids. According to research studies, MYCAP is a promising practice for personalized planning and delivery of quality career development opportunities. Students who were engaged in the MYCAP activity reported stronger goal-setting skills, increased motivation to attend school, and increased academic self-efficacy that led to better academic achievement, stress and health management, that's a great one for everybody, and readiness to engage in career decision-making. So one of these things coupled with what I just said to you about our one-on-one and um, sessions with kiddos is we want them to be thinking about their careers moving forward at Bartlett. That's our big thing, whether it's career-ready or college-ready, we want them to explore some of these things. So our partnership with MYCAP will be very important as we move in to the next year and through all the phases, as you heard, um, with our building coming and all these new wonderful um, opportunities there. But MYCAP is something great that we dipped our toe in to the water with last year. And this year, it has led us into the next thing on our uh, agenda tonight, which is our senior scoop. And that is also a coupling those career readiness pathways, allowing students the opportunity to compete in workshops across the state funded by our partnership with the Black Stone Valley Hub in resume building, unlocking your potential, interviewing skills and soft skills, and lastly, navigating the job search. So all of these things coupled um, with a lot of our teachers as well, from the different core areas and also the elective areas, we've um, created these groups on campus um, with our folks off-campus. And their next big adventure will be um, going to the BV Hub at Polar Park on April twenty-third. We will be uh, welcoming over three hundred students. That um, our current students enrolled in this program are twenty-seven. Those twenty-seven students will be going to this hub so that they can compete with students um, and work alongside as well. But the competition will be more for scholarship type things and things as such. But they will be looking at career network opportunities, conducting interviews, and then just connecting to certain jobs that are outside of the Webster area as well as some that might be inside of the Webster area. Also, they will have direct access to colleges that will be on campus there in addition to our career fair and college fair that is coming as well in April. So I just wanted to share some of those great things going on and kind of how they connect to the next uh, decisions that our uh, kids will be making very soon in the weeks to come.
Thank you for your updates, Mr. Collins. Any questions or comments from the committee? It's great to hear all the work that's being done to prepare students for their next chapter, whatever that might look like. And uh, the next item on the agenda is an update from our student representative. Good evening, Mohammed.
Good evening, everyone. So let's get right into it. So I want to talk about senior stuff first. So there, for the seniors, there's um, the community service hours that are due by April fifth, which are mandatory for them to graduate. Um, I think normal like seniors, they need ten hours. And then if you're an NHS, you need twenty-eight, which is like added eighteen more hours. Um, and then also with that, you need to pass in your class dues as well, um, which you also need to graduate for, which also need to graduate. Um, and on the fun side, there's prom tickets that are being sold in the cafeteria. The price is seventy-five dollars and your dues have to be paid before buying the ticket. Um, the next thing I want to talk about was ELAM CAS. Um, it started today, it's going to go on tomorrow as well. And it seemed to have smoothly, right?
Yeah.
Okay. It was smoothly, by the looks of it. Um, and I hope everybody did really. Yeah, it did, it really did.
Day one went smooth. Day one went smooth.
And I hope everybody did really good inside of it. Hopefully.
That's right.
Um, and then lastly, I just want to talk about Easter egg hunt, which is happening um, on March twenty-seventh at one o'clock.
Tomorrow.
Yep. So um, at one o'clock. It's five Bartlett bucks if you want to do it during school. And you can uh, buy it, like they, they already have the sales going on, so the sales are closed now. But you know, hopefully it goes really smoothly as well.
Yes, so don't, don't forget to invite them out as well for our community Easter egg.
Yes.
Hunt and dinner tomorrow night. And then tomorrow day, our students will get to participate in the Bartlett uh, egg hunt after MCAS. After, after MCAS is over in the morning. And we will have that and then we want to invite the, the families of Webster as well to come and join us tomorrow night.
Yes, at six o'clock.
Yep.
Yep.
You got it.
Where is the prom?
The prom is going to be in Indian Ranch. And the theme for it is A Night in the Clouds.
Oh.
It's going to be fun.
Interesting.
Right?
May eighteenth.
May eighteenth. Thank you.
May eighteenth, six to nine P M.
Yeah, it's going to be fun. Oh, that's it.
Again, all the prayers for day two.
I'm glad it went well because there was a little email going around from the superintendents and some districts, they got stuck on a question.
Question eight.
Yep, and they couldn't pass through and they were on the phone with the support team for a while. So knock on woods, we didn't have any of that trouble.
Not one issue, passed question eight, so we're good.
Good deal. Alright, well, thank you for your updates, Mohammed. We'll see you tomorrow evening.
Thank you, see you tomorrow.
Alright, sounds good. Alright. And then the next item on the agenda under Old Business is the FY twenty-five budget update and approval.
Thank you. Alright. So tonight, we're here to present uh, budget version three. Have you, as you know, we've been working on the budget for months now. Um, and I just want to start by saying, um, I want to give a shout out and a big thank you to the administrators. This has been really tough and a hard budget cycle that we've been working on for some time now. Um, I think we were all a little more hopeful that the revenue um, would have been better for us here in Webster. I think that's the um, the, the wish across the state. I think everybody's a little disappointed in what they see in numbers coming out. Um, but with that being said, fortunately for Webster, we did, still did see an increase in chapter seventy revenue. Um, and we weren't one of the districts who just received minimum aid. Um, but we've been very fortunate over a period of time with ESR funds um, for the last few years that we have been able to add and say yes to everything and process everything. And unfortunately, now that um, has come to an end. And it's time to really buckle down, really hone in on all of our expenses and really dive in um, to our budget and to um, all of our staffing across the district as we move forward. So we'll go through this presentation and then answer any questions you may have. Um, so here's where we started. On January ninth, twenty-twenty-four, we presented to the school committee our first round, which was a level service budget. We had everybody who was, um, we did not add anything new at that point. Um, we had the staff that we continued to have across the district at uh, one hundred percent and just some minor um, additions to the budget at that point for technology replacement and stuff like that. So that was a seven point zero nine percent budget. Uh, we then went and reevaluated that budget and submitted under second budget to the school committee on February thirteenth with some reductions. Um, knowing at that point, we didn't know exactly what our numbers were going to be, but um, we knew from the um, rumors that were going around the state that revenue was down and we were not expected to see the increases that we had in the past. So at that point, um, we did a reduction of four hundred and fifty-one thousand to present. Hi Mohammed, have a good night. Um, a five point three five percent budget, um, which would have been a one point, uh, roughly one point four million dollar increase from our FY twenty-four budget. Uh, then uh, we learned about our state revenue from the state, um, which came in about between eight and nine hundred thousand. We then met with our town officials and local officials um, from town, our town accountant, uh, town administrator, uh, reviewed revenue numbers, reviewed expense numbers. Um, typically what we've done in the past is we take the revenue, it goes into one pot. We take out any shared costs from that revenue. Shared costs are insurances and, and items like that. And then whatever's left in revenue, we split seventy-thirty with the school department getting seventy percent as we are one of the bigger employers in, in Webster, one of the bigger departments. Um, so that, what that meant for us was the town was asking us to reduce an additional five hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, which then brought our budget down to twenty-six million, seven hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight. Um, or an increase of eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-one from our FY twenty-four budget. So we had to pull together as a team and start really digging in and taking a look at um, all items across the district. Um, we looked at um, how we could be creative with our expenses. But as you know, our budget um, is made up about eighty percent of it is salaries. Um, so there's not a lot of wiggle room. We looked at all our utility accounts, we looked at our maintenance accounts, we looked at our technology to see where we could be frugal and cut and maybe purchase something this year that um, if we have any additional funds for next year. Um, but really what we did is when we looked at staff reductions, um, these are the factors that we considered. We looked at our mission and where we're going with our instructional priority. We looked at our enrollment trends, we looked at class sizes. Um, we looked at the needs of special education and L. Um, we looked at our support services and then we looked at teacher ratios. And this is the mindset where we, how we approached our budget. So here's a breakdown where we were from January ninth. Uh, and January ninth, what is, it included nineteen positions um, that were funded from ESTR to LEA. Uh, it included all of our contractual increases. It included an increase of a special education tuition. As you, as you know, I had spoken a few times that um, when we look at an eight hundred thousand dollar increase and we've seen a seven hundred thousand dollar increase alone right now, um, more than that right now in tuition um, in one year, um, you don't even get to cover your contractual expenses um, to hit that eight hundred thousand dollar number. Um, we've looked at technology and um, we had moved some of our newer extracurriculars from ESTR into LEA. So then at our February thirteenth budget, um, we looked at, we had to make some adjustments for some sped positions that were added um, because of program requirement and IEP requirements. So we did that, we reduced technology, um, we had eliminated some positions at that point. Um, and then we made a sped tuition adjustment and um, we addressed some, uh, real, reallocated some substitute funding and addressed an AP position. So that brings us to today, where we're at today. Um, what we're proposing today in our budget uh, is we are eliminating um, another addict academic interventionist and one adjustment counselor. Um, at Webster Middle School, we had the librarian. At Bartlett High School, we are recommending one school year administrative assistant, one uh, social studies teacher, one L teacher, one instructional coach, one para. And um, we had some overlap built in the budget for guidance counselor. As you know, we have a retirement in November. We were hoping to hire that position at the beginning of the school year. And so we were going to have a couple of months of overlap, um, so we could get somebody coming in at the start of school. It's a little easier hiring at the start of school. Um, but unfortunately, we took that overlap out. Um, so that was a small savings there. So what does that mean for positions across the district when it's all said and done? At Bartlett High School, um, we're proposing to eliminate six positions. That is an instructional coach, a para, one school year administrative assistant, and three teachers. Um, you can see down below where we have some marks. Uh, we have the art teacher is a retirement, uh, the L teacher is currently vacant. So um, and you'll notice the asterisks at the para. We have multiple vacancies across the district there. So um, paras will just shift in, we have enough open vacancies that we can move people around. Um, at the middle school, we've eliminated three positions. We've eliminated one reading specialist, one librarian, and one nurse assistant. We shifted from an academic interventionist to a reading specialist. So we switched that. We do have an academic interventionist on board that is a certified reading specialist. So we still have that capability there. And then at Park Avenue, uh, we have seven positions. We have three para professionals, we have two academic interventionists, one adjustment counselor, and one sped teacher. So overall, we have sixteen positions, um, which is going to impact uh, ten staff members from our initial budget. So that would put us, again, we are looking tonight for an approval of a budget of twenty-six million, seven sixty-one, five seventy-eight. Um, as you know, we have, our strongest focus has been uh, looking to support this budget, to support our instructional priority, where our main focus has been on tier one instruction across the district. We do understand that's where our biggest need is and so that's where our focus has been. Um, we need to support the instruction that's happening on a day-to-day basis in our schools. If we are not supporting the teachers, then we are not doing our jobs. We can't expect them to know what to do if they don't have the support and the direction from us and the oversight from us to do that. Um, so are there any questions that I could answer for you tonight? Uh, we're all here, the administrators are here in the building. I think uh, you know, we've had a lot of discussion back and forth about the budget, um, a lot of hours in this room. Um, and it's difficult. This is not, I think, if you ask anybody here sitting here tonight, if you ask them if they like this, they're going to tell you no. Um, you know, they all want their positions. Um, they all, you know, were working really hard to make progress and progress. Um, but unfortunately, with the amount of revenue that we're getting, we just can't fund it all. Does anybody want to add anything? Please do, if you'd like to.
I believe that every position in Webster is both needed and valuable, you know. And uh, this ESR funding that we've been receiving over the last several years has provided us with resources to address some of the real learning gaps that resulted from COVID and quite honestly, learning gaps that existed even prior to COVID. We funded some key positions with those ESR funds and I think that we are uniquely positioned as a district in that we began the process of moving some of those positions into our regular budget over the last couple of years. We just weren't able to absorb all of them into the budget, unfortunately. I mean, this is tough because you know, we're, we're talking positions. I know there's people in those positions and not only the people that are impacted, but everyone's impacted by this. And every member of the Webster School community is valued. It's such a. It's such a, such a difficult thing to go through this process.
I couldn't agree more. I couldn't agree more. It's hard. These are conversations we don't like to have and we don't want to have. I said it on opening day, and I'll say it again. Everybody here is equally important. We all play a role every day here, and I do value, they're important. Everybody's important. And it's just unfortunate that we're put in a position where we have to make choices that are not always easy, but we have to be fiscally responsible. We have to go forward with a balanced budget. We're hope, you know, we hope that it still hasn't passed through the state yet. You know, we've got the governor's budget. There's still process to go. You know, our hope is that we go to town meeting with a balanced budget, but like last year, we did see increases towards the end, and we went back and added things back in. So I know there is a push across the state. You know, we, everybody's been impacted by the inflation rate that they set, which impacts our Chapter 70 formula, was set very low.
Right.
So, you know, there is a push for that to be increased across the state, to reevaluate and look at the numbers, because districts are having a tough time. I mean, we're hearing cuts across the state. It's not just here, it's everywhere. And we're in a position where at least we're seeing an increase. We didn't just get minimum aid. We're seeing an increase in our Chapter 70. So we've been fortunate in that sense. But if you ask if we're happy about it, the answer is no.
No, I understand that, you know?
I'll throw the chair.
Mr. Adamopoulos.
I mean, just reading everything everyone said, obviously, this is very difficult. But the craziest part of all this is we're also in a position that's probably better than most of the communities around us with a 3.1% increase compared to somebody. So, but going back to the human element, like you said, these are people's careers. There's a snowball effect after to the other teachers inside and the administrators inside the buildings. The one thing that has been brought up in all of our meetings concerning this budget during our budget workshop was the focus on tier one instruction and making sure that educational component was looked at during all this, at least from my consideration of seeing what's been presented. Now, I think that the tier one aspect has been strongly looked at and taken into account here. But going back to what Chairman Siddiqui said, I mean, this is an issue where the federal government gave all of us ESTR funds for a period of time. We built up a budget that included these positions. I might give the administration a lot of credit because we've had been able to take a lot of those positions and implement them over the last two years back into our budget, but these are funds that we really built a lot of these positions and took into account, and we've now lost that ability. And there's Chapter 70 inflation data inside our packets where we're capped at a 4.5% number, but fiscal year '24, it's over 8% is the inflation rate. I mean, we're talking about $217 million that could get divvied up across all the school districts and the towns. I mean, we're, we're put into a very tough position from a legislative position, and these aren't easy decisions to make. I know that the administrators here, your side has really gone into this. I give you guys all a lot of credit for making these decisions as difficult as they are. But I do want to credit everyone for at least focusing on the students and that tier one educational component, because I think that's very, very important. Hopefully, there's some changes coming forward from the state side. I mean, I know from the town perspective, over the last few years, there's been a lot of push of if there's additional funding coming in, if we get extra revenue sources that that 70/30 split is normally followed. So hopefully, that's something we can agree to again with the selectmen, and if additional funds do come in for some reason, we're able to absorb some of this impact in a positive
I agree. Any other questions or comments from the committee about this? Hearing none. Anything further that you wanted to add, Mrs. Prangeli?
No, I just want to thank everybody for their efforts and their work on this. It was a long process. And, you know, I don't, our work is definitely not done, and hopefully, we can come back and ask to put things back in. Nothing would make any of us happier than to do that. But, you know, tonight, we're looking for your approval of the $26,761,578 budget.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the FY '25 budget in the amount of $26,761,578.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you please poll the committee?
Member Adamopoulos?
Yes.
Member Abra?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, motion passes. Once again, thank you to the administration and all of the staff, the unions, everybody that was a part of the discussions that brought us to where we are. And I remain hopeful that, you know, when the state budget is completed, we'll come back here and talk about adding things in, but we certainly need to be realistic about what our current landscape looks like. So thank you again.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a second reading of Policy AC, non-discrimination This policy was last updated in November of 2020, and MASCE updated it most recently in August of 2022. So this, this is the second reading of the updates that MASCE has provided to us. Any discussion about that? The next item is Policy ACR, non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation. That's also the second reading. And since our last meeting, we learned that that R basically represents that there's a regulation associated with the policy. And as long as that's included in the policy manual, it requires the three readings that we do with other policies as well. And this is a policy that we don't currently have in our policy manual, and it was introduced by MASCE in August of 2022 to go along with the previous policy, AC. Any discussion about that? Okay. And the next item is the second reading of Policy ACA, non-discrimination on the basis of sex. And this policy was last updated in October of 2015, and it was updated by MASCE in 2022. And this is an update that includes wording regarding discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity. Any questions or comments about that? All right. And the next item here is Policy ACAB, sexual harassment. This is also the second reading. It was last updated in November, excuse me, September of 2020, and MASCE updated it back in December of 2021. So we changed the title and more specificity in the policy language there. Questions or comments about that one? The next item is Policy ACE, non-discrimination on the basis of disability. This is the second, first reading on this one. Second? Okay. Thank you. I thought we had that last time. And this was updated by MASCE in 2022, and the title was changed regarding, the wording from handicapped to disabled was changed. Welcome change there. Any questions or comments about that one? Okay. And the next item on the agenda under new business is the Student Opportunity Act Review and Approval. Mrs. Prangeli?
I apologize for the late add in your agenda with this, with the Student Opportunity Act. I planned on reviewing it tonight, but I didn't know I needed an official vote to have it uploaded to DESI. So as you know, the central office team, we have been working on the SOA, which is the Student Opportunity Act, which needs to be uploaded to the department by April 1st. The Student Opportunity Act calls for every district and charter school in the state to develop a three-year plan, referred to as an SOA. District's plans identify where data reveals disparities in student learning opportunities and outcomes for student groups. They serve and describe how they will utilize evidence-based approaches and strategies to address those disparities. In your packet, you have a draft summary that is, was for your review. The SOA is aligned with our instructional priority, and tonight, we have Dr. Patty Mackay and our Director of Student Support Services, Kathy Barris, who will speak to the three-year I need to get you guys mic'd up over there.
Thank you.
Actually, I think it shut off now. Is that red?
It's green.
Okay. Red from here.
So, thank you. We will continue in Webster to focus on the instructional priority, where we've named that Webster educators will implement evidence-based culturally responsive instructional strategies using high-quality instructional materials that hold high expectations for all students. And as a result, all students with a particular focus on MLs and students with disabilities will do the majority of the thinking in daily lessons, increase achievement, and increase their sense of belonging. Over the past few years, we've participated in several grants, including the Early Grades Literacy Grant and the GLEAM Grant, which helped us to really understand equity and the necessity for us to think about not only equitable opportunities for students to participate in high-quality grade level instruction, but also to consider any potential disparities so that we're looking at equitable outcomes for students. So what we do in the name of equity, is it making a difference for students and are they, are the outcomes for students equitable? As we enter the phase of sustainability, because the GLEAM Grant ends this year and the Early Grades Grant ended a couple of years ago, we have to think, so what do we take, what do we take from the work that we've done and move forward with it? And I guess that's where, like, the Student Opportunity Act makes us think, like, what do we, what do we do next? And so we've identified the student groups that we're targeting for what's called accelerated improvement. And one of the pieces of data that we used was a tool that DESI has called the District Heat Map. And so if you can think about what that might look like, so areas of disparity have hotter colors, and the two hot groups for us in colors, clearly, the heat map clearly illustrates that we must improve the experiences of our students with disabilities and our MLs as they've experienced the greatest amount of disparity. The next group, which was pinkish, was our low-income group, which, as we know, our district data, we have a large number of students who are considered low-income, and they represent across the subgroups. And sometimes we don't talk about this subgroup because it is like representative of so many students that are Ls, that are students with disabilities, that are students of color, that are white students, that are all, all of these different categories of students. But that group was the next in line, which means it's beyond MLs and students with disabilities. So we have, I think it just helps us reinforce what we're doing in tier one, the focus that we have for tier one instruction, which first and foremost recognizes that all students are general education students, and that what we do first in tier one is to create those opportunities to give them access to high-quality education. What we've identified as the, the Student Opportunity Act asks us to choose some high-leverage practices, at least two. We've chosen one that is related to creating safe and supportive learning environments, and that we've articulated the work that we've done for SEL primarily with our PBIS work, but we're also engaging in some trauma sensitivity work across the different schools to really consider the conditions of student learning and safety, how, if students feel like they belong. We've talked about sense of belonging before. If students have a sense of safety and belonging, then does that increase their chances of success? The answer is yes. The second evidence-based program that we talked about in the Student Opportunity Act is really taking a look at our student supports. So in conjunction with, just not replicating the work of our instructional priority, but in conjunction with our instructional priority, taking a look at how we identify, how do we, how do we first know who needs help? Is what we're doing in tier one working? Is it working for everyone? And what do we do if it's not working for everyone? So really taking a look at the systems of support that we can articulate and have, and if we, if we have underdeveloped systems, then this will cause us to further develop those systems of support. I think that that summarizes the Student Opportunity Act that we've articulated this year. Do you want to add anything, Kathy?
No, I think the, the work that we're doing with a lot of our district partners, like the SOS, SOS team and TNTP, as well as the GLEAM consultants, has really, I think, helped us to, you know, kind of focus our work and help us look at, you know, the work that we're doing and validate that, you know, we are really on the right path to, you know, continuing the work in the direction, you know, that, that we've articulated with them. And so when we look at our instructional priority, I think all of that kind of like, it just hits the mark on how we really should be continuing to focus. If you look at the demographic, if you look at the district heat map, it really just continues to support that we are moving in the right direction to, you know, to, to help our students achieve and also, you know, have a sense of belonging within the district. So, you know, this was just our three-year plan that, you know, that we can continue to articulate the work that we're doing and feel pretty confident that, you know, like that we are on the right path.
I will add, you know, so how do we do some of that work? We've talked, you heard a little bit about the biology pilots happening. We've heard a little bit about the math pilots happening. So one of our commitments is to continue to seek out resources that are high-quality instructional materials and to provide educators the support that they need in order to implement them. And also to, to, that includes helping our educators understand how to support the different populations by leveraging those high-quality instructional materials. We'll do that through some targeted professional development. And so PD is a big part of what we outlined in the, in the SOA, because we want to make sure that our teachers have the right supports in order to see like the end that is targeted in, in this work, which is better outcomes for all students.
Thank you. Thank you both. So as you can see, just from the work that we've been doing with the SOA and our instructional, it's all an instructional priority. It's all in alignment, and I truly believe that we are heading in the right direction, focusing on the tier one instruction and supporting, supporting the work that our teachers are doing and giving them the support that they need, the professional development, the follow-up, the continuum tier one instruction that is needed to make gains. And I think you'll see that. We're just staying the course. I keep saying, working smarter, not harder, you know, not adding new. We don't want any new initiatives here. We don't, we want to get really good at doing what we're doing, and that's tier one instruction.
Thank you, Mrs. Prangeli, Dr. Mackay, Mrs. Barris. Any questions or comments from the committee about the Student Opportunity Act? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you please poll the committee?
Member Adamopoulos?
Yes.
Member Abra?
Yes.
You have her light?
Yes.
You have her light?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the review transfer signing of bills, payroll, and vouchers.
The next item on the agenda is the Review Transfer Signing of Bills, Payroll, and Vouchers. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes, meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.